And if you would join me and replace our flag. And then Reverend Dwight Winter will come over our presentation tonight.
Praise allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day. We thank you for refreshing the earth with rain. And pray for those who are still sorting out and cleaning out and will be rebuilding from the effects of the flood earlier this month. Would you encourage them? Would you strengthen them? Would you help us to know how best to continue to help them as they move forward? May they know that we are walking this journey with them. I do ask that you would be with the council and the mayor as they work this evening? Help them as they leave this city? Would you give them the mind of Christ in all things? And may they carry well the responsibility before you as they fulfill the position that you have gifted to them? We ask this in your name. Amen. Well, thank you, guests, friends, young people, older people, friends. We often have this young people come to our council. It's a delight having you here. So grateful. I'm going to move through this pretty much the way it is and quickly because for me, because I have another meeting at seven fifteen. That's imperative for the city. And so I'm going to wave on any report except to mention that the president, Asbury University Chamber Breakfast. It's tomorrow, nine o'clock. If you signed up to go to that, and if you haven't, probably still can get in. So that's in the shuffle. The other thing, just a report, I got a text today that the delay on starting. Jeff, did you get that? Starting sidewalk project will be mid-May. The contractor's mother has four foot of water from floods and is preoccupied. So we're delayed on that start. And then I'll move to the minutes of April seventh that have been circulated to you. Are there any corrections or amendments to be noted? Thank you. And thank you. All in favor, please indicate by a high.
High.
Any opposed? Okay, Lori, looks like you're the speaker's speaker tonight.
Well, the first one is just the municipal writing that we always do. It's from the state. It just says that for this fiscal year, our portion would be like one hundred forty thousand. So there's a resolution to pass for that. And then you decide it, and that's pretty much it for that. So include that in our current budget.
That was not too hard for the council. It's just that if you want to receive that money. And we need it in the form of a resolution to enter into the minutes. So is there any motion? Is there a motion to approve that? So moved. Discussion. Resolution twenty twenty-five basically giving us funds from the Congress to take. All in favor, please indicate by a high.
High.
Any opposed?
And then I could just pass that hand out on just some proposed budget draft items. We're very familiar with the process. But these are just a few items that I've already gotten that I could go ahead and put on here. Still having some meetings with departments. I meet with Jeff and James on Wednesday to talk about some long-term projects that they are interested in getting started on and wanted to, for us to start thinking about. But these are just some high-level things that I wanted to go ahead and get in front of you to see if anyone had any questions or comments or whatever. I don't need to read through these. But one of the things was kind of a difference from what we typically do is a five percent increase in sewer and water rates to just sort of help with a lot of the big expenses that we're having with searching out all the meters and some of the larger projects that we have coming up ahead.
The third item there, we have been discussing in our department meetings on Monday. The impact fees were passed a little over twenty years ago. And the impact fees were set at one thousand dollars each for water, sewer, recreation, police, and fire. Based on inflationary factors, it would take one thousand six hundred and seventy dollars to equal what that would have been twenty years ago. You are sitting with potential growth on both ends of your town. And that is a plan with growth, paying for growth concept. So it, I think it's time that those are adjusted upward to reflect that and to recoup that. Much of the expenses that you all approved this last year for an extra fire truck and work at the river and river roads and capital projects have come from the impact fees, not from the budget itself. So that's why we're putting those there. That will be a part of the budget that you will get. In case you have any questions, you can get back to the way about that. Does anyone have any questions over this list that you wish to raise tonight? No accent, accent tonight, but just.
I'm curious, we've got four bullets there of increases. And I don't know what amount of dollars that equals. And the expenses and assumptions, those most, you know, handful of those percentages are a good bit above five percent increase. I'm just curious what those, I guess those are going to be asks in the future. Those additional things are, which of those have been cleared? Or have been cleared already? Like the two vehicles at the police department, did we already approve those?
No, nothing's been approved yet. These are just kind of requests at this point.
Okay.
That we're gonna, once I get enough information to compile everything, I'll be bringing more solid records. But these are just things that have sort of been requested at this point.
My gut, at least how I read this, it looks like there's a much lower increase in revenues than the level increase for expense requests.
That is very accurate.
Good. Well, we have an item that's not on the agenda, but an item that we're going to hear tonight. A request of, make a presentation.
I'm going to stand on this side just because it makes sense to put these items over here. My name is Becca Burin, and I am a Wilmore resident, and I'm a certified economic developer at the University of Kentucky. I'm coming to the council today because I appreciate all of the work that you guys have been doing over this last budget cycle on making our downtown a great walkable place. We're looking at splash pad opportunities in places where our youth. But I would also, I am acutely aware that you have a budget in front of you or budget propositions in front of you that your expenses and asks seem to outweigh your income. But I'm going to go ahead and add to that list because right now it's the time. And so I would like to ask the council to consider donating or dedicating a hundred thousand dollars to playground upgrades in the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six fiscal year. And the reason I asked for that amount, we will talk about here in a second. But as a community member, it is my job to not only make sure that my voice is heard, but to make sure the voices of all of our population is heard. And I know that each one of you as council members, you were elected to speak up behalf of your community members. And sometimes our most vulnerable population, our youth, unintentionally get left out of this space. And not because we don't value their opinion, but sometimes we don't always create the most welcoming environments for them to come. But thankfully, you guys have made this council extremely kid-friendly. And I think that kids belong in so many spaces that typically they aren't included. And when you include youth in your decision-making process, that creates a sustainable community that can only grow in the future. Otherwise, if we're not training young leaders to continue up and how to speak up at a city council or how to run for a city council position or how to run for a mayoral position, then we are doing them a disservice. And so that is my voice, and that is the ask that I would like. I also would like to reach you from a project that we did recently, and this was a teacher that could not be here. And I'm going to unveil these super fun things because it leans to what we're going to speak about. So here before you, you have five different playground designs. And we'll get into how they came to be and who made them. So from a teacher at Wilmore Elementary, she is our gifted and talented teacher there. She said, "When this project was first brought to my intention, I first allowed my fourth and fifth grade gifted and talented students to fill out a survey. Students were asked to rate their interest on the following ideas: designing a dream playground, no limitations; designing a natural playscapes within a budget; writing a letter to city council members; and possibly speaking at a city council meeting." Students who expressed the highest level of interest were chosen to work within their areas of interest on the project. Designing the playgrounds was done within the school day. The students who chose to write letters chose to do that on their own time outside of school with minimal guidance from the teacher. All students were provided with initial research related to their specific interests in the project to help them get started. Other than supervision and some minor editing help with the written letters, this project was completely completed by the students. I'd like to read you a couple of lines from some of the letters that I will give you at the end of our presentation from the students. "Wilmore is a place of love, joy, peace, and kindness. It's a small town with worldwide impact. Studies show that," and I quote, "young children are, as many have argued, intuitive urban planners." Another student said, "What better way to welcome the next generation than to hear their opinions directly from them? Wilmore is a multi-generational community and would benefit from having all different ages represented. Children designing playgrounds can help them realize they have a voice in their own community. Research shows that getting kids involved increases their commitment to civic participation and helps push cities to create greener, healthier living spaces for all." And finally, these youth are from Wilmore Elementary, and they were excited to get involved with their community now and in the future. Having a kid design a playground will add more out-of-the-box equipment than just having a slide and a swing set." So I present you two natural playscapes. These were kids were given the project assignment to create a natural play area. They were given a budget of a hundred thousand dollars and worked within that budget. So our first playground has a lot of different things, and in bold on each one of the playground sets, you'll see the item that the youth thought would be the best item to have. And I bring these to you not because I'm saying this is exactly what we need to go with. But I will state that this natural playscape, this cost, according to the students, is, this one is forty thousand dollars with a remaining budget of sixty thousand. This secondary budget, they spent eighteen thousand dollars, leaving you eighty-two thousand dollars to do whatever you would like. So these other three, these were just dreams. And so on the dreams, you have everything from tunnels, rope bridges, merry-go-round, student slide, monkey bars. But one thing that's really interesting is none of these kids were told to provide a space that was inclusive for all. But every single one of their drawings provided space that was inclusive for all. One even included a baby play area, and they thought about what should the ground make up be as well. And so sometimes as adults, we forget the most vulnerable population. We forget about maybe those that are crawling. And as a parent, I'd love to say that this is my wheelhouse as well because I'm taking my kid to the playground, but I really only want three things. I want the playgrounds ready for bugs because I get bit by bugs. I want shade so I can sit in the shade, and I want a slide that I can't fit in so I can say, "I'm sorry, momma can't go down this slide." But that's me personally, and that's only one small voice. And so I'd like for the kids, they have prepared something to say as well. And so again, the ask is that you would consider adding a hundred thousand dollars to your budget for the next fiscal year. And if that's not possible, preparing for in the future to make sure that playground upgrades are on the radar and are actively pursued in the future. Because as we've learned over the last year, that our playgrounds in Wilmore have, they're over twenty-five years old. That's why it took us a year and a half to get a slide to replace just a tiny piece over at Raina Park. So I'll invite the kids to say their piece.
Hello, my name is Zoe Lauten Sager. I'm in fifth grade and I go to Wilmore Elementary. Thank you so much for listening to our opinion on an important subject. Wilmore is a community where people come together and build relationships. But the parks are outdated, old, and broken. I've come here to ask you for a one hundred thousand dollar allotment. This money will go to updating the city parks. The input of youngs, Wilmore citizens is very valuable. So please consider allotting one hundred thousand dollars and asking for youth feedback. Thank you for your time.
Good evening. My name is Glenn Doughty. I am a Wilmore resident that attends Wilmore Elementary in the fifth grade. Thank you for being generous enough to let us speak today. I love Wilmore and I enjoy being a part of the community. However, we have noted that our playgrounds in Wilmore are over twenty-five years old and beyond repairs. I enjoy being outside and playing at the parks. However, I'm running out of good playgrounds to play on, along with many other kids that attend Wilmore Elementary. Please allot a hundred thousand dollars for our city parks. Please also let Wilmore's youth have input on the design. I think that since kids are the people playing on the playgrounds, their opinion should be heard and genuinely cared about. Again, thank you for your time. Wilmore is such a lovely place, and I'm glad I got to speak.
Good evening. My name is Avery Wong. I'm in fifth grade at Wilmore Elementary. Thank you all for being kind enough to let us speak tonight. Thank you for all that you do for the city of Wilmore. It is such a great community, and we have you to thank for that. We would all very much appreciate you upgrading some of our playgrounds, and we believe that kids' input should be recognized. As you all know, Wilmore's playgrounds are over twenty-five years old. And when a part of the playground breaks and needs repaired, the part that is needed is no longer available to purchase. We are asking you to please allot one hundred thousand dollars to upgrade the city of Wilmore's playgrounds. We also ask that you take kids' input. Have a good rest of your day, and thank you for listening.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Levi Sims. I am in fourth grade at Wilmore Elementary School. Thank you for your commitment to helping the city of Wilmore. I would like you to upgrade the playground equipment in Wilmore and allow the youth to have input in the design. Our playgrounds are over twenty-five years old, and repair parts are not available. Please allot one hundred thousand dollars for our city's parks. Please include the input of Wilmore's youth in the new designs. Thank you for listening.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Akku Christian, and I attend fifth grade at Wilmore Elementary School. I'd like to thank everyone for taking their time to listen to us. I'd like to advocate the idea for a new playground in Wilmore. Most of the playgrounds here are really old and some broken for a large sum of time. But I say we have something new, interesting, something that would encourage citizens to socialize. Us kids at the West GT program would like to ask you to allot one hundred thousand dollars to go towards playing playground upgrades in Wilmore. We'd also like to add that you include children's input on the idea. As you can see, we've put a lot of work into it. So again, thank you so much for giving your time to listen to us. We hope you'll all consider our ideas.
My name is Hazel Rayner. I'm in fourth grade at Wilmore Elementary School. Thank you for everything you do for Wilmore. My favorite thing about Wilmore is its natural environment. I would like you to upgrade the playground equipment in Wilmore. I believe we should allow children and citizens to have a voice and input in the design. Our playgrounds are over twenty-five years old, and some repair parts are unavailable. Please allot one hundred thousand dollars for Wilmore's parks and playgrounds. Please include the input of children and citizens in the design. Thank you for listening.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Peggy Ralte, and I'm in the fourth grade at Wilmore Elementary School. Thank you for your commitment to Wilmore. What I like best about Wilmore is its diversity and natural environment. I am here today because I would like you to upgrade the playground equipment and allow children to be involved. Our playgrounds are over twenty-five years old, and repair parts, repair parts aren't available. We ask for an allotment of one hundred thousand dollars for our city parks. Please include the youth's ideas for designs. Thank you once again for listening to our broadcast.
So as you can see, our youth love to be involved. None of these youth were coerced into being here. None of them were highly encouraged. None of them were told, "This is exactly what you need to say." Because I don't believe that is creating and fostering an environment where they can use their own creativity. So here you have copies of all of their designs. And then you also have letters written to you, city council members specifically. And then you also have drawings and opportunities to view about natural playscapes. So thank you so much for your time. We really appreciate it, and I hope that you'll consider allowing our youth to speak up more and providing more opportunities for them to feel welcome and invited. Because when a community feels welcome and invited at all ages, clearly, they will show up and they will bring their best ideas. Thank you.
Well, Amy's budget is out of rank another hundred.
We've got ideas on that, too.
Well, if you bring a check, we'll be glad. I met with a group today, and they asked for eighty-two thousand. And the requests just keep coming. So I don't want to discourage you that this is not important. I too help build those parks. I'm a park and recreation person. I have degrees in that area. And one of my best students ever is our Parks and Rec Director back there. We meet hours a week and talk about playgrounds. And we're talking very seriously about playgrounds right now. Of whether you renovate what you have, or you build new, or you do both. And where does it go? And where's the most important place for it to be? Which population should be the primary? So we take you serious. And I do agree that user planned is the best plan. We don't play on. You play on, and younger. But we do take your requests serious, and it's well thought out, and very much appreciate it. I would urge you to work with our Parks and Rec Director. She lives this stuff and deals with this stuff every day. And that's where these ideas usually come back through. Where's it going to be? Just like right now, we're talking about splash pad. And it's been months trying to decide where it's going to be, how big it's going to be, what features are going to be there, what other cities have used. I mean, it's not something we're taking lightly. We only get to do this once. And as you say, it'll have to last twenty-five years. Because you're talking about a hundred thousand dollars, and today I drove around, we have six parks, playgrounds in Wilmore. So where do you start? And that's not including what churches have or what schools have. So where do you start with renovations? Do you do a little bit on one or two? You do something on all of them, or you fix one really well? And so we're trying to decide that right now as directors of whether those locations, all of it goes collaborative into a single area? Or do you keep them diversified throughout the community? So I'd like to get your all's names. I'd like for you to get those to Amy. And maybe they're on here?
They are not for privacy purposes, but I'll get the rest of the questions to share.
If you would like to be included, you need to give us your name, or your parents. Give us your name. And we'll get that to Amy, and then someone from the city would contact you. And you would identify it as a wilmore.org address when they contact you. But thank you very much for coming. And this is new, so it'll take a little time for everybody to digest it. If the council has any questions at this time, it's all welcome. How do you do that?
I don't have a question, but I never miss an opportunity to make a comment, so I'll make, I'll make three really quick comments. It was about two or three years ago, we had students come here to city council because we had a rule or law, if you will, called an ordinance. In Wilmore, that you could only have four chickens. And there were some children that wanted to have more than four chickens. Because they said you could have more than four cats, or you could have more than four robes, or rabbits, but you could only have four chickens. So the city council listened to them, and we now changed the law that you can have as many chickens as you want. I just want to encourage you that we do want children to come, and we do listen to what you say. One of the most important committees we have in Wilmore is called the Community Development Board. That's a big group of people that come and develop our community. About three or four years ago, I went down to Wilmore Elementary, and I met with Ms. Thompson, and I said, "Hey, we want somebody from Wilmore Elementary School to be on the Community Development Board." And she said, "Well, I'll do that." And I said, "No, I want you to name somebody to be here." She said, "No, I want to be on the Community Development Board." So every month, Ms. Thompson comes up here to this room right here and meets with other members of our community. So I would encourage you to communicate with her if there are things that you want us to think about, too. Because we do, we talk about a lot of things in that, in that. So thanks for coming, Emily.
Well, I won't let David get the last word. I'm going to present you something for coming tonight. We have little keys to the city. So you that got up and talked, wouldn't you? Are welcome to come up and get one of these. These are just little symbolic keys to the city. Says City of Wilmore has a train on it. It's kind of our landmark, benchmark, trademark. But it's the, something that I can give as a mayor to citizens and your citizens, and you've done a good job. So I'm going to give each of you a few hundred. Hope it all run out.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'm glad you didn't have one more. I would have been in deep water. Amy, have any closing comments? Anything there, too?
What a great, exciting group of kids, you guys. That was, that was very encouraging. That was very interesting, and I appreciate all your all's effort that you put towards that. And would love to stay in communication about what we're thinking and doing and what's possible in the future. So thank you all so much. And parents, thank you for being supportive. And Becca, thank you for organizing. Thank you. I do have just a couple of other quick updates, if that's okay. Just recreation stuff. We have the Easter egg hunt on Saturday. It went amazing. Nice, huge crowd, and a great Easter bunny came out to visit, and everything was wonderful with that. Summer rec, and we are this close to being full with registrations. Very excited about getting that program kicked off again for this summer. The, if you remember, we had talked about renting the back, what used to be the music room, it's now the activities room to the Lions Pride martial arts studio that has been remodeled, repainted, everything. Looks wonderful in there, and that had, they have started holding their glasses in there, and that is going very well. So another great activity that's going on in our building for our community. And then our volleyball league for the girls for the spring is, is going strong. And one delay, you all know that we have now one hundred and ninety girls that participate in that. So it started with, I think we started with three teams the very first season, and now we have, I think there's fourteen teams total. So it's, it's, it's a lot of fun. The only other update quick I have is the pickleball courts are scheduled to be painted in early May. So we're still waiting to hear what that exact date is. So as soon as we get those going, we'll do a little ribbon cutting quick kickoff for that and get some. that and get some, some excitement going with those.
Saturday, uh, coaster car derby?
Saturday is the coaster car derby and that is Ms. Judy Wohlman, so I will not steal her thunder with that.
How can I get access to the cars in advance? Who's got the key?
What's the ask?
Get, uh, getting to the coaster cars in advance.
Jim?
Yes, ma'am.
Contact.
Judy, Jim, call anytime, Bobby, and I'll meet here. Whatever we need to do.
Judy, wanna go ahead and tell them about the coaster car and flowers, et cetera? All these reports are done on Monday, but we do them again for you.
Well, before I do the coaster car derby, I want to say Wilmore has its annual Arbor Day celebration. Uh, this is a joint project with the Wilmore Elementary School, the Community Development Board and Adventure Surf. And so we're very pleased to have that continue on and the children are always so excited. Uh, our coaster car derby, this will be our tenth one. We have seven new cars in addition to the fifteen or so that you guys bring. Uh, it'll be this Saturday. Rain is always a major factor. We cannot get the hay bales wet that are loaned to us and there are about three hundred of them. So a decision to cancel or to go ahead will be made, uh, late Friday afternoon. So check social media if we have to.
It'll be postponed, it's not gonna be canceled.
Right, yeah. We moved it to May seventeenth, so. And, uh, we encourage people to come out, bring your children. They can register. Not every child will get to race. Some of these cars already have designated drivers, but we always have cars that need drivers. And so please bring your children. It's great fun, lovely to watch and see everybody enjoy themselves. So come on out. Eleven o'clock registration test drives.
And you gotta come see the Wilmore Police, the Wilmore Fire and Wilmore Utilities. They're painting up cars. White of competition.
They're pretty sharp looking.
Reese Lori's budget's up.
Thank you.
On a, kind of a positive note, uh, this was an initiative started by you and your son, uh, to honor a friend. And, um, they raised five thousand dollars to buy these cars. Um, and now we're selling them for five hundred dollars apiece. So you talk about entrepreneurship, even Jim likes this. But this was a, a community initiative of, "An idea and we'll bring you the money." And, uh, they did and they worked the event. Uh, if you wanna see two loggers running down the street like chickens with their heads cut off, trying to wipe these two, uh, pull those cars. And all the cars have been moved to the Granary Auxiliary Building, so we no longer have to pay rent where we have them stored. So we're keeping them in our own building now. Anything else on that, Judy?
I think that covers it.
Okay. Any other, uh, reports of directors that wish to say? We're talking. I'll talk that this morning, huh? Anything else from the floor? Anything else from the council?
Newsletter goes out on Sunday. Anything that you have to put in there is Thursday.
Thanks for you guys. Thank you all for coming. Be sure to sign. Thank you.